I will call the Blackstone Millville Regional School District School Committee meeting for October 14th to order. If you could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we'll do introduction of members.
I'm Carrie Satna, I'm from BMR.
Amanda Gilmain from Millville.
Erin Binaco, Millville.
Tim Howell, Blackstone.
Carrie Godett, Blackstone.
Sarah Williams, Blackstone.
Madison Marshawn, Blackstone.
Matt Erwinworth, Assistant Superintendent.
Jason DeFalco, Superintendent.
Thank you, and we'll move to our student rep reports. We're happy to have you back for your second meeting.
Thank you.
Whoever wants to go first.
So for sports, JV football won their second game last week. Seniors games start yesterday with soccer. Tomorrow is volleyball and field hockey. Volleyball officially made it to their playoffs during their, for the first time in their like career since they've been started. And for homecoming was a success on the 31st of September. Around 230 students attended and the weather was nice outside and it seemed everyone had a good time.
And then I'd like to shed light on a new class that Ms. Conti, a history teacher at the high school, put together, and it's called Food for Thought. It's basically taking like food that can be shared among like all people and incorporating it into different aspects of history. So like culture and heritage and like feeding a crowd, psychology. Last, I believe, two weeks, October 5th, we put together tacos for teachers during the lunch period and we made everything from scratch. We made homemade tortillas, homemade guacamole salsa, we made beef, everything you could imagine for tacos, and we fed about 37 teachers. And overall, the feedback was good. And also during the teacher meeting that they had yesterday, we made like fall baked goods. I think the class is really good and everyone seems to like enjoy it. It's a different way to like look at school through like food where I think everyone loves food. You might not be the best at cooking it. I think overall you like it. And then NHSS met Wednesday morning and we're planning for a booth at the Fall Festival and that's at Roosevelt Park. And then Student Council had their first meeting and we're currently planning Powderpuff, which we weren't able to have last year, but we're able to have this year. And Fall Conference is coming up in October, nope, November. And that's really exciting because last year all events were virtual and this year it will be held at Oxford and we'll get to go to a bunch of different leadership conventions and just meet new people from around our region. And then GSEA is holding a solidarity conference, which is kind of like Fall Conference, but it addresses like different topics such as like privilege, being a bystander, body image issues. And I think that's a great way to like incorporate our community with different communities around the Blackstone area and that's going to be held at BMR.
Any questions for our student reps?
What time are the games tomorrow?
Tomorrow, field hockey is at 3:30 and volleyball is at 5:00.
Thank you.
And those are both home, home games for the seniors?
Yep, both home.
Any other questions? I have one. Is there a playoff schedule for volleyball yet or is that...
We haven't gotten our schedule yet, but we know it starts after Halloween.
Will there be any home games for the playoffs?
I'm not sure. Pretty, I'm thinking there probably will be. Just depends on how far we get into playoffs.
All right, well, good luck. Thank you very much for sharing.
One other question.
Sure.
When's our next band competition?
Saturday.
This Saturday?
Yes.
And where's that located?
I'm not quite sure.
It's in Cranston.
Cranston.
It starts at 6:00 PM and our band is scheduled for 8:00 PM.
Awesome, thank you.
You're welcome. All right, thank you very much for coming. You're welcome to stay or go home and do homework.
I'm just going to stay and I have to leave because of other priorities, but I will stay this time.
Thank you for being here.
Did you pull the shorts wrong?
You can dismiss yourself at any time. All right, so moving on, we have a quorum and we can approve our consent agenda A, which is warrants minutes of meeting for September 16th. Any motion for...
There was one error on the agenda, the minutes, I believe the 16th, I think we already did those. Either we did them or they're not in the packet. I couldn't.
That's the wrong date.
Sure.
So we'll exclude the minutes and just approve warrants. Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve warrants for...
Motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Amanda and second by Tim. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And we also have public forum now. I'm not sure if anyone needs to speak to us. You might be on the agenda later anyway. All right, and moving on, do we want to skip? Do you want to go to Matt first and wait for Jane?
Sure, you can do that.
Okay. We're going to, if it's okay with the rest of the committee, we're going to move to report of the business office and we'll go back to report of the superintendent and our school committee items. Just because there's a lot of information packed in there and I believe we have two additional members on their way. So Matt, it's all yours.
Certainly. It's a rare treat to go first, so I appreciate the opportunity. If you look at the total revenue report in your package, everything is being collected smoothly. We're getting all of our expected funds, no hiccups to date. Again, some of the grants still have not had their initial issuance, so you'll see some of them, we've not collected anything. However, the state releases those funds and they do an initial disbursement and then that's when we can start drawing down. The only thing worth noting on the revenue report is that our Medicaid program revenue, I'm now anticipating that it will be almost at, if not higher than what it is that we budgeted. They recently released information that they're going to allow the districts to add administrative claims that were associated to COVID-related costs for services that were provided through the pandemic. So they're going to be providing districts with more reimbursement from Medicaid. So that will be very helpful. Any questions about the revenues? If you look at the general fund expenditure review, you can see that there's nothing, again, we're still relatively early in the, in the school year. There's nothing that's standing out. You will notice that there are some, some red numbers in places. Some of that is because we budgeted that money in one spot and it now is being expended. We are just expending it from a different line. But for the most part, if you look at the totals, which is on the second page, and you go through the summary of the various functions, the 1,000s, 2,000s, and 3,000s, you can see that we're in the black and everything right now and we're not expecting to run into the red at all in any respect. Any questions about the general funds?
Yes, please.
Yeah?
One out of 9,300 non-public programs. Give me an idea what those might be.
Yeah, absolutely. That is the out-of-district placements. I had mentioned that, I didn't mention it again because I had put it in an earlier report. That negative 271 will be offset on the grant, on the grant funding expenditure. If you take a look at the circuit breaker on Fund Code 28, that circuit breaker where you see the current available balance is 254,000. That's, that's funds that we actually put toward the out-of-district costs. So that looks like a big red number in the, in the out-of-district, but we reimburse that account through the circuit breaker fund and also through some of the Title I funding for services.
Okay, because I'm looking here and I see the, the light purple. I'm terrible with colors.
Yeah.
I see the 278 on the grant funding and then under the available money, 254. And when I look back at the general fund revenue or the general fund expenditures, we're 271, 62 in the hole.
That's just based on what's encumbered. That is a significantly low amount considering the expenses for the special education programs. And this circuit breaker amount that's budgeted is actually a conservative budgeting amount for circuit breaker. So we are actually anticipating getting in more than the 533,000.
Okay, so the 278, does that include the, the 271 that's... I'm looking at the grant funds.
No, right now, so right now, we, we encumber funds for out-of-district placements either from the 9,300 line or from the circuit breaker fund. We target specific placements with the circuit breaker fund. So those are encumbered, but there's still an available balance in the circuit breaker fund. So as we move along in the year, we just shift the money from the circuit breaker, we actually, we shift the expenses from the 9,300 funds to the circuit breaker funds and they, they end up balancing out. I do not foresee us going into the red with respect to our out-of-district placements this year.
Thank you.
Worth noting on the grant fund expenditures, you'll see that on the bottom of the sheet, I added the S R 2 and S R 3 grants that we're going to be receiving. The S R 2 grant, I just want to be clear, that is for just this year. That's not the total of our S R 2 funds. That, again, if people remember, that grant is split over two years and that's just one year of those funds. Similarly, the S R 3 is one year of three years of funding. So that's approximately a third in the S R 3 of, of the total funding that we're going to be getting, but it is what we allocated for this year. The S R 2 grant, when that came in, we actually budgeted for using the S R 2 grant. So you can see all the way to the right where it says offsets. That will show you the function code that it offsets, which is the general education teachers. That's where we applied those S R 2 funds for some of the interventionists and other positions that we were funding through the budget. The S R 3 is not indicated to offset anything because we added additional pieces after we had budgeted when we found out we were receiving the S R 3. So the S R 3 positions, they're not in the budget, they're just separate that we identified as services that we will provide through S R 3. Are there any questions about the grant funding expenditure? Also have my personnel update that is included in your package. You can take a look at that. If you have any questions, you can certainly email myself or Monique. And moving to the facilities updates, right now, the baseball and softball fields are looking pretty good. We did remove the old backstop from the side of the field. We did that in-house and it actually created a very nice clearing over there. The landscaping was, there was seed slicing done and there's irrigation that's taking place now. It looks like the grass is actually starting to come in and that's very promising for right now.
What fields was that? I'm sorry.
That's on the, the baseball, softball, in the outfield area. So it's abutting into the, that football practice area. We actually did have an extensive conversation about the whole football thing that we discussed earlier. They're not using that section with the exception of practicing for kickoffs and that's only for about 10 to 15 minutes, maybe once, once a week. So there shouldn't be a lot of wear and tear to the field based on the football practices. We did also start looking into removable outfield fencing options. So that will be not, not just like temporary, but we're looking at putting in like permanent, permanent fixture holes so that we can put the fencing in and then remove the fencing as needed. But the, but the, like the ground will stay where you put the fencing. And the tennis courts are, we're still waiting. The, the company is still backed up. We have not gotten a firm date from them, but we were expecting the end of October. I will find out if we can hold true to that. That may not be possible. That being said, we still anticipate it being done prior to the, to the season. And the last piece that we had hanging out there was the safety laminate on the new vestibules and that was completed.
Okay, why are we considering the removable outfield fencing?
Actually, per conversations with yourself and, and other people, the interest in the outfield fencing became, became a subject of discussion. And with the athletics director and the grounds and the director of facilities, or the interim director of facilities, excuse me, Scott, we were discussing what would be practical there, given the use of the field and the seasons and what teams do practice there. So we were thinking that the removable fencing, we could put the fencing up for the games so that the outfield line is clear. However, if there's any kind of practices that need to take place, that we can take the fencing out or if we choose to have any type of event in the field back there at some, at some point in time. That was, again, we're simply exploring the option of that. There's nothing that's been committed to it.
I'm just going to the fact that we're spending money to level the fields, to make it playable, to make it safe. And now we're talking about putting removable fence panels in that will not be safe. Even, even the kickoff, I mean, the other running down the field, the kicking the ball, the practicing the kickoff, practicing returns. And I understand the cramped space, but I also understand the need to have a field where the baseball players aren't going to run into a rut and twist an ankle, twist a knee or something like that.
The fence would not have, the holes would not be there while the baseball players are practicing. The fences, the fencing would be in the holes and it's sturdy fencing.
Okay.
It's just, it's fencing that can be, that can be removed.
You put a hole in the ground, you move the fence so you can have football to practice. Football messes up the outfield of the baseball field that we're spending money on to solve now.
As I mentioned, the football, the football practice is only doing kickoff practice in a small section of that area. So they're really not, they're not damaging that area significantly at all right now.
Tim, lighting my tongue rings next.
Just to clarify though, Tim, that field has been our soccer field, the outfield. It's a multi-purpose field, so I think, I think a removable fence, if it's safe, is definitely an option. It's beyond, it's a soccer field. Irrigation was put in to, to, to take care of the soccer field, not the baseball field.
Yes.
Marching band has practice down there when necessary. It's used for more than baseball. So I think if the need for a baseball fence is, if we need a baseball fence, then making it removable helps us keep that as a functional field for all the other activities that typically have to use it for, for space reasons. But I would assume something being done like that would be done safely to allow all activities.
There's inserts, there's inserts that go into the ground where the fencing goes and it doesn't just leave holes in the ground for people to...
It isn't solely a baseball field, so it does make sense. If you put a permanent fence up, you're making it a baseball field. And then we have irrigation in our outfield for what? Like that wasn't, the irrigation wasn't put in for baseball.
When we discussed this at the end of the summer, the concept was to create a specific baseball field and a specific softball field. And now we're talking about making it a multi-purpose field again, which defeats the purpose of spending $275,000 to make all that specific locations.
I would assume it comes down to space issues, right?
The repairs that we were engaging in, in those conversations was the fencing to make sure that the baseball and softball field had the appropriate fencing and delineation for the kids to play on. And the outfield came into question just with respect to some of the ground being ripped up by the practices. It was, it was not significantly unsafe. There is no leveling that's happening to the, to the field out there. It is relatively level. We just had the seed slicing done and we're trying to grow the grass back so that any of the athletics can...
Forgive me for stepping back and asking and interrupting, but we had sports teams who played other locations because the field was not safe for them to play on. Now you're trying to tell me that it's going to be safe for football to practice on and baseball to practice on and play on. I don't buy it.
So the teams asked to be relocated for multiple reasons. Not just because it was not safe, but because the other fields had other amenities that they were looking to utilize while they were playing the games. And the damage that was being done in the field was from the football team practicing extensively on that field.
And that's why we decided to put up a permanent fence in the outfield to keep the football team off the outfield.
That's what I recall as well.
That's what I recall as well, to separate the space.
Mr. McNulty came, had a map for us, showed all the spacing proposed. Kind of football would have been in what was the old baseball field and like up to the bottom of the hill near the tennis court side, but that was going to keep baseball, baseball, softball, softball.
So was soccer totally displaced for, like permanently displaced? I thought it was just this year.
Soccer is permanently displaced.
Well, no, no. We said we were trying this year, but we would have to seek alternatives. We don't know what those alternatives are. We very specifically said that the baseball field would be a baseball field. We did.
The fencing...
We were, we were, that was, the direction was proposed.
I'll have to go back and review the proposal, but it's my recollection, the proposal that we presented with respect to the fencing included the backstop fencing and the baseline fencing. There was no outfield...
To make the balls not go out of...
Correct, but there was, there was no outfield fencing.
No, okay, that makes sense because I was a little confused by that, but then we talked about temporary fencing, which I guess is what you're talking about now?
Yes.
To keep people off that field though, but not to, I don't know, how would you...
So, so as I said, the football team asked if they might be allowed to just practice their kickoffs there and there was a conversation with the interim director of facilities and the football coach and myself. And we determined that based on his explanation of how they would be using that small section of the field and the limited time that they would be using the field, that it wouldn't do any significant damage to the field. So you are correct in the sense that we discussed having the baseball and softball fields be complete fields. That being said, we still want to make sure that we can use that space as needed if there are other things that we, we choose to do there. And the outfield fencing was never part of the original proposal to have permanent fencing. So I'm just putting in that after conversations, it's clear that some type of fencing will be helpful for the field regardless of who's using that space at any given time, but for playing baseball and softball, the outfield fencing makes a difference for them to know where the boundaries are. So we decided that we would start exploring the options for the, for the temporary, not temporary, but removable fencing.
Erin's got a question.
So Matt, the 275-ish thousand that we approved for, it was for the back, the backstop...
Backstops, dugouts.
The dugouts. So are you going to come to us with a, another proposal or are you trying to fit it into that amount?
We're trying to fit it...
For the outfield fence?
Yes, we're trying to fit it into the existing plans and not have it be a major additional capital expense.
Okay, but when we did approve that, it was, we did not talk about perimeter fencing?
No.
Correct. Thank you.
Any other questions regarding the facilities? Oh, we do have a facilities request as well. We have a few. I can let Tara speak for the first one.
Yeah, we're going to have it here. So the elementary school PTO, BME PTO, is planning a trunk or treat for all of our elementary students. And because we have so many now, we thought instead of either Blackstone or Millville Elementary Schools, either the high school or the middle school would work. I reached out to Mr. Schaefer and Mr. McNulty and found out the schedules. Looks like the high school is most likely being used, so we decided to ask for this building. It'll just be the parking lot and all the elementary kids. We're going to do time slots so families can come between like one and two, two or three, three to four and four to five. So to kind of keep the crowd down a little bit, manageable. So we would like the 23rd as our primary date and a rainy day of the 30th. 12 to six, so we can have setup and breakdown. But we wouldn't need the building, just the parking lot.
Any questions? You can do them as a packet unless somebody wants to separate one, but...
Jane, can I just share that at the very back, you may have noticed...
Yes, you gave us the rules.
Yes, I appreciate that. I did notice.
We did list that and the cost of things.
Thank you. So any, any issues with the town of Blackstone having a fall town meeting? Nope. No. And how about any issues with the dance company? They're asking for the auditorium cafeteria and the teachers' cafe.
Yeah, the back teachers' cafeteria room. She's always used it.
And those dates, we know there's no sporting activities? Like there's no football game, there's no...
I do not.
I can't confirm that, that schedule.
But we don't usually do that. We'll send it over to confer the dates with Linda, so let me...
I can tell you that band is over.
Band is over?
Yeah.
Jill approved it.
Yeah, Jill must have checked it with Linda already.
That one?
Terely. This is, this is Veterans Weekend.
Yes, correct. But doesn't look like they'll be there on Veterans Day. Anybody have any issues with or questions about that?
It says they want to use our hydraulic lift.
Yes, I thought that was weird.
Do we, we let them do that?
I'm pretty sure she's used it in the past, not that it makes it okay to say yes right now, but it's definitely been used just to hang the lights in the backdrop.
Operates it or whatever.
There will be custodians.
Yeah, she has a custodian. Click that on the next page. Maybe we get paid for this one. Got paid, but pay a fee.
All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve them all.
So move.
Second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, so approved. Thanks, Matt.
My pleasure. Thank you.
All right, so we're going back to... All right, so we're going back. Did we, did we do the one?
We did one, three. Yeah.
Okay. Well, again, I apologize for missing the beginning of the meeting. I apologize for missing what you had to say, but I'll watch it, I promise. Sure it was good. So we will move on to school committee items. We have a proposal to engage the insurance, MIAA Insurance Association to look into their post-65 Medicare program for our current and future retirees. There is a motion in front of you if somebody would like to make that motion.
I'll do it.
Okay, thanks, Jim.
I move that the district engage with the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association to participate in their post-65 Medicare program. As such, the district will assume responsibility for paying the associated Medicare penalty fees for current and future retirees. In return, the district will receive a 3% discount on its insurance renewal rate for fiscal year '23.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Amanda. Any discussion? Who was the representative who talked to us about it at our two meetings ago?
Yes.
Anybody have any questions about it, any concerns?
Well, I don't think that our concerns at this point can do much because it's either pay a penalty or pay higher rates. So we're darned if we do and darned double if we don't.
Hopefully in the long run.
We save money.
We find it a savings.
Yes.
Just in, in terms of our insurance usage, which determines our rates. In the short run, we don't know.
I, I can add, I know that the question came up at that initial conversation about how many other people might be in that same category.
Correct.
And as of active employees right now that could potentially retire, we have one individual that I do not believe intends to need to go into this program.
Any other questions or discussion? Bearing none, it was moved by Tim, seconded by Amanda, to engage the Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association to participate in their post-65 Medicare program. As such, the district will assume responsibility for paying the associated Medicare penalty fees for current and future retirees. In return, the district will receive 3% discount on its insurance renewal rate for FY '23. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? So KHB, is that this one?
Yes, can I make one?
You can.
Is it all right to just speak to that quickly?
Yes, it is.
So Amanda and Tammy, Matt and I have been working on this. As you know, this is the second time we've brought it before the committee, the policy draft. We did get feedback, of course, after our packets went out from MASC. Not significant in nature, but just wanted to share very quickly. The, our representative from the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, Anne Marie, shared that the draft policy is fine as it's written. What she recommended though, was that we actually leave policy KHB in place and make this policy KHB hyphen R. So she was sharing that this would be a good kind of addition to the policy we have, but she does not recommend removing the other policy. So what we would ask is to make a motion to accept it as KHB R and then just not do the second motion, if that makes sense.
So you have in front of you a policy for sponsorship and advertising. We won't read the whole entire policy. It has been posted. But I'll entertain a motion to approve KHB R.
I so move.
Okay, Tim, is there a second?
Second.
I'm going to go with Sarah. A little bit quicker. All right, is there any discussion? This is definitely much more detailed. People should get a very good idea if they want to do something.
So we're keeping KHB, which is, is that the last page? Is that the original?
That's right.
Little tiny paragraph?
Yeah.
And that is four pages long?
You can advertise, yeah.
This is becoming its friend.
Okay. So they don't contradict each other?
No.
No.
Okay.
No. They don't. That one, that one. Anybody? Nothing? All right, all those in, in favor of approving KHB R as written and submitted, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, there you go. We also have another policy, BEDH, which is in a draft. And it changes our public comment at school committee meetings. And in the, in previous iterations of this policy, it just said people would be allowed to speak for an appropriate amount of time and the chairperson would determine appropriate. And the new policy said speakers will be allowed three minutes to present their material. So if somebody wants to come into public forum and, and speak to the school committee, they are limited to three minutes. We also amended the introduction to say, however, this is not a question and answer period. The school committee is not able to engage in dialogue during public comment. They are only able to listen. The school committee meetings are meetings in the public and not meetings with the public and not with the public. Which we have said, which has been our past practice, which we have said, not always easy to do, but we have said. So does anybody have any questions or discussion? Are we doing this or is this the first reading? So any discussion?
I like the idea- I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Aaron.
Are we putting a wall up in front of us by doing this? So we, I mean, we, we do have to receive the public as well. So is it a little too open and closed or are we? I mean, obviously we all know, sitting here now, that we can bring it up in, you know, if someone brings something to us and, and we, one of us did want to talk about it, we can bring it up in school committee forum later in that meeting. But five years from now, there's four different committee members and, you know, this policy is going to be held over their, their table. And I, I just, I feel like it's not very community friendly and we are a community.
So it, it is very standard. I don't know if it's community friendly or not, but it's very standard. And it, and it is the way that we are trained in our MASC training when we do, when we do our initial training. And it, you know, it, it needs to be consistent and it needs to be fair. We can't decide to have conversation with one group because it's a nice friendly conversation and then another group comes in and wants to scream at us and we sit politely and, you know, follow our rules. So I did think we do have to be consistent and I think we do have to have public forum for what it's supposed to be. An opportunity to, it's not an opportunity for dialogue. It's an opportunity for, to present concerns, questions, congratulations, you know, whatever, whatever. Somebody wants to make sure they get in front of the school committee. So it's a chance to get in front and to, to speak your piece, if you will. But it's not intended to be a dialogue. If we want to do that, we have open forum meetings. We have other opportunities for that. Tim wanted to go and then I'll go to Sarah.
The, the three minute window, and I understand what Aaron's bringing up, but the three minute window gives the speaker an opportunity to prepare their comments, be organized and get their point across without sitting there rambling for 15 minutes and not completing their thoughts. I like that.
Sarah? And I think we've talked about it before, but the original intent, I was under the impression that it was public forums designed this way so that we can't stifle them. Like they get their three minutes or however many minutes. And even if they're saying things that we want to like jump over the table over, we aren't allowed to, right? So it's supposed to-
Yeah, the only, and I don't know, the only way we would stop someone is if it were offensive or, you know,
And that would be you, right?
Completely out of order.
Yeah, that's where they're going.
Yeah, completely out of order. But, but short of that, they have their three minutes to say what's moving them at the moment.
This recommendation came from MASC.
Yeah, very common, very, very, very common.
So the however, the yellow section is new.
Is new for us.
New to us, but it's standard wording.
Yep.
Yeah, I guess the three minutes is quick, but I'm, I mean, town meetings I think is three minutes too, isn't it?
It is, yeah.
I think we've been telling them three minutes.
Yeah, most of the time we do say, you have, you know, three minutes. You know, my concern is it doesn't let somebody come back again. If, if there's a whole group of people and somebody hears something that sparks a, doesn't, just says three minutes. That's my, that's my, like, ooh.
Do they just come back after someone else?
It doesn't, it doesn't.
Well, at some point too, they, if, if it's something that they want to have a discussion with us on, they should be entertaining, you know, the chair and asking to be put on the agenda.
Right.
And then it becomes more of a-
Dialogue.
A dialogue.
Yep. Anybody else? All right, well, this will be on our agenda at the next meeting. For approval, we'll make sure it gets posted on to the website. People to review. And then the next one is, just every time I see it, I want to say like jib jab or whatever. What's that Christmas, you know, the- But it's the championship jackets. And we had talked about this. I don't know if we talked about it in our workshop or one of our meetings, but the fact that there's no more district or there's no more what?
We had received an email from the athletic director.
But that there's no more district championships? There's now like section? Isn't it, something's different, right?
They play almost like a state tournament now.
But I couldn't tell what changed in here.
But I can't tell what changed in here either.
Because it still says district championship.
This is just the current, if I may?
Yes, you may.
So this policy JJIBA is our current policy. Nothing changed in it.
Oh, nothing, okay.
One of the, our members had requested that we bring it up just to discuss because there was a change in the actual bracket structure.
Right.
So that what we have in our existing policy may not work moving forward based on the bracket structure we have. So the question that came up from the policy subcommittee was, do we want, does the school committee, would the school committee like us to take a deeper look at this? Wanted you to have an opportunity to see what the current policy is. And then we could make draft revisions as we've done with the others so that it fits and meets the current MIAA structure for Central, for Central Mass. So it was more of an information and just to discuss and see if it, you know.
I, I have a question on number two here. Majority is subjective. That needs to be a hard number as in a percentage of the season? Or a percentage of the performances for band?
Well, actually, majority is not a hard number. It's just one over a half.
51%.
Right? Majority is just 50% plus one.
Yeah, 51% over 49, yes.
So.
As a, as a point of information, just because there were questions, I have the athletic directors comment that the MIAA is moving to a statewide tournament that will eliminate the districts. And there will be a Central Massachusetts tournament that will occur during the regular season. And I believe the Central Massachusetts tournament will be the equivalent of the district tournament.
So I guess the question that, you know, I, I feel it should be explored more. I just worry that if a Central Mass, you know, if I'm an athlete in swimming and there's four teams in Central Mass and so we, you know, we win versus we're in soccer and we win 20 matches, but we don't win, I don't know. I don't know that it's equitable sport, like I don't know what Central Mass tournament means, like for each sport. So I think we want to make sure, they're never going to be equal, but they should be equitable. That we're, if we're awarding a championship jacket and it's not for a state championship, that it should be something that's equitable to a national championship for the band or, you know, not a weekend, you won the weekend tournament kind of thing or, you know, I, I don't know. And I don't know what the Central Mass tournament will be. I don't know. So yeah, from my perspective, I'd like to dig into it deeper.
It sounds like it's a season, like it's going to be their record within their season?
Right.
Or is it, it's not something-
Or is it a playoff thing?
It sounds like-
Should be the season champion, like however you word it.
That's what I think, based on the information from the AD, the athletic director. We can, we can certainly explore this deeper and, and look at what recommended changes we could bring forward to the committee for a first read. But we wanted to just discuss it here.
Anybody?
I'm just-
Have a sense of it?
I'm sorry. I was going to go back to Tim's majority. I kind of agree, well, I agree that I think it should even be more than half. It should be like 75%. I mean, it needs to be more than half, so.
But what happens when, when our basketball team went up and they, they advanced a few years ago and they took two JV players that, or that were swingers? So what, what are we, are we hurting those kids?
Right.
They played, but they can't get a jacket. They practiced with them, they, did they have the playtime or were they playing for their, for the JV team? I, I don't, I don't think it would be fair to exclude them.
That's in here.
That's addressed in number one.
Yep. That's in there.
A JV player for the coach feels.
He's talking about number two, the, the, what is, what is majority for marching band?
So why is there majority on band and not on sports?
It does say majority actually in the beginning.
It does say it in both.
Second line.
But it clarifies a JV player.
Who's invited to be-
Is not counted.
Unless the coach thinks he-
Another question here is, is there a difference between a letterman jacket, a letterman sweater and a championship jacket? Is it a special run or do they only get championship jackets?
We only do jackets. The title says jacket.
Championship jackets.
Maybe it's not sweaters.
I, I just, I am a strong believer in school spirit and when something like this happens, I think the camaraderie, we want to give it to them. We're not, we shouldn't, I, I don't think we should be sitting here saying, well, let's make sure we understand, you know, who's actually getting one. When that team wins, when that, when the band wins, there's a sense of camaraderie and excitement and celebration in the community beyond this building. The jacket is a small symbol of that, but it says it right on the bottom that the, they're wearing them with pride and, and you're representing your school. There's not a lot of kids out there with these jackets. I mean, honestly. And, and being around the band more than sports, we, we've been to some schools where when the school that's hosting the band show has all of their alumni there and they're all in letterman jackets, you feel their school spirit. It's, it's a different feeling. So I just don't think we should be talking about like how few we, we could ever give out. I would love to see more kids have these.
I, I agree with you. As, as a letterman in high school myself, I understand that. But I, I want to make sure that it's not just a participation trophy.
It is not. It, I don't think it ever has been at this school. It's been, they've been earned.
Oh, I'm not in the band.
Okay. But do you have one? Do you play a sport?
I don't play a school sport.
Have you seen people wear them?
Yeah.
And are they very proud of them?
Yeah.
Can we get some, that's my-
We got feedback from the coaches and the band director on the policy and see what their thoughts are on determining-
Yeah, I would, I'd like to see both of them, the, the band director and the athletic coaches, next meeting, so that we can get their feedback.
Or, I mean, not even necessarily showing up to a meeting, but just getting their feedback on the policy.
I think I have a couple of questions, just based on, like, what would the wording be on the jacket? Because, you know, you feel like, uh, districts is pretty succinct, they're district championships. What would we be putting on the back of this?
Central Massachusetts Tournament Champions?
In tiny letters, yes.
Right! Is it a tournament, though? That's, we don't know.
Right, and that's, yeah, that's kind of where I feel like it's...
Like, I think if you, you know, it says national champion, or it says state champion, you get it, but...
Right.
And, and for the tournaments and things like that, there are patches that you can put on the sleeves to win tournaments or whatever. I'm not sure what the basketball team does for tournaments on weekends and holidays, but, you know, that could be put on there as tournament champions or whatever.
Now, if they go on to win states, do we also give them a jacket?
Well, so once you have a jacket, that's what you get.
That's it, okay.
Then you just get patches.
Patches.
Okay. Patches. So it says, that's number five, any student who has received a jacket will not receive a second jacket, um, that just...
Gotcha.
Uh, I guess they get it lettered, but they do get patches as well, I think, right?
Yes.
Patches.
Is it like a standard jacket for each thing, for, like, that covers all championships? Or is there, like, a band one or a...
No, it's a, it's a, it's, it's...
The same jacket, right?
Well, it's the same jacket. I mean, whatever the style is of, that, that, you know, I, I'm sure it has changed over the however many years, but...
No, the band jacket is definitely a corduroy, or a wool, a wool, yeah. But the football boosters did purchase the, the team jacket, letterman jackets several years ago, and those were different. Those were the purple body with...
The leather sleeves.
The leather, yellow sleeves. So I guess I always assumed that our sports jackets would look that way, but maybe it's something they chose, but those were purchased by the...
Those are letterman, right. Yeah, I don't, I don't know the last time we purchased a championship.
Unfortunately, I can't say that.
Well, no, no, other than band. Maybe volleyball.
I know, they're, they're...
What?
Got too hot.
They're starting playoffs after...
But I was lined on the inside, so I never had to worry about the wool sliding through, but...
All right, so we want to explore this more and get feedback from the coaches and the band director.
We are on it.
Are we okay with that?
We are on topic.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, COVID-19 update, as we had mentioned in our meeting in August, we would review monthly our policy. So we are reviewing for the month of October, that the, um, I know Karen has updates for us, but as far as our policy goes, we are sticking with our masks in the school because it's moved to November first, um, through DESI, and, um, we will review it again in November, and by then we should have a sense of whether or not they are going to make any changes. There is an option for schools to, um, make changes to the mask policy. If those impacted are over eighty percent in our communities, they are not, so we are not eligible for that exemption. But Karen, would you like to add to that, if anything?
Um, no, we're, we're not at those vaccination rates yet. Um, hot off the presses from today, Blackstone twelve to fifteen year olds is at forty-six percent, sixteen to nineteen is at fifty-four, the town as a whole is also at fifty-four percent. For Millville, twelve to fifteen is thirty-seven percent, sixteen to nineteen is fifty-seven, and Millville as a town is forty-four percent.
Wow.
So we have a long way to go for...
Get to eighty.
Any of our schools to hit eighty.
Yeah. Um, and I, you know... I completely understand that, that it is personal choice, but that personal choice is truly impacting many, many individuals, and we get emails, I, sometimes it feels like daily, I know it's not, but, um, you know, I know that, I know that we've opened up so much more, that there are more community events and family events, but we have to be better. We have to do better.
Yep. And our cases this year, um, we hit thirty-four cases today. We, last year, we hit thirty-four cases in January. So it's, you know...
Karen, last year at this time, we were at, we were at...
Two.
Twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, two or three.
Two. Yep. We had no cases in September. We had one case on October seventh and one case on October tenth, so...
And so far, we have thirty-four.
Yep.
I was in a corn maze when you and I were talking on that day.
Did you have a vaccination clinic or get one set up for the students?
Yeah, um, I was going to get to that for, in a minute, but I can, can jump to that. So there is a, an employee flu clinic that is scheduled for October twenty-first. The, um, student flu clinic for the middle school and high school will be November third and fifth, tentatively, and I'm waiting to hear back from the state on the COVID clinic. So as soon as I know more, I will share that with you. As far as other numbers, so far, we've had two hundred and ninety in-school close contacts, forty-eight of those did test and stay. Two hundred and six were monitoring only, meaning they were in the three to six feet range and masked. Um, ten were vaccinated, twenty-three opted to quarantine rather than test and stay, and three had previously been positive in the last ninety days. So far, we've done over a hundred and eighty tests, um, with our test and stay, and overall close to two hundred of the antigen tests.
Have there been any positive cases from our close contacts?
No. No. There, well, there was one that was a non-quarantining close contact that tested positive, but it's hard to say in that case whether the exposure came from the student or elsewhere.
Any other questions for Karen? Anything else?
I just want to add, um, I did see on the news this week that the first school was, um, approved to remove masks, I think it was Holliston?
Hopkington.
Hopkington, I stand corrected. So it is possible, but they, they met the eighty percent and got the approval from DESI, I believe, so...
It's eighty percent in that building?
Eighty percent of that age group for that building, so... So if it were the high school, it would be the sixteen, well, no, it would have to be the twelve, it would have to be both groups.
Right.
Have to be both groups.
Yeah, the, the way DESI breaks down the numbers don't correlate...
Match, yeah.
With the schools.
But it's eighty percent of the building.
But of, of the building, yep. All, all staff and students in that building.
So do we actually have that number? You're giving us town, town numbers, but...
No.
Where do we stand, how do we get that information?
It's hard to get, um, our, Aspen doesn't connect with the state, um, immunization system, plus we have some, um, both staff and students that are getting vaccinated in Rhode Island. So those numbers aren't shared with us unless the family or the, you know, staff member shares them.
So we're actually not even sure where we stand, even, we can't really go from the Blackstone and Millville numbers.
No.
So...
I would disagree with that.
We can't be higher than it.
Yeah, right, yeah.
We can be, we can...
Well, we could be, if they got vaccinated in Rhode Island, and I, I can say that all my kids did, so I don't understand, I don't, I don't know, like, what are we doing to see where we actually stand in the high school? Because if eighty percent of the staff and students in that building...
We're not even close, Erin, respectfully, we're not. I can tell you right now, we're not. Look at, look, if you look at the numbers, and, and I would also add, Karen, the older teen numbers, the, uh, what is, the bracket is sixteen?
Sixteen to nineteen.
So how many of the eighteen and nineteen year olds that are in that bucket, which is just around fifty percent, is that right?
Um...
Fifty?
Yeah, fifty-four, fifty-seven.
Okay, and then, right. Are getting those for college, they're not even students that are here. So I, I, I'm, I'm saying what, I think what Jane is saying, which is, we would have to have over thirty percent of our students that got vaccinated in Rhode Island that haven't reported that. I don't know.
I think if people want us, if the, if people in the high school, staff, students, want the masks to go away, we need to find a way to get that vaccination information loaded somehow.
Yeah. The cha, the only challenge we'll have with some type of a general survey is, anybody can say yes.
Yeah, no, you can't, you have to, you have to...
Show the card.
As they say, you have to show the card.
Yeah.
Yep.
Are other districts doing that?
Yeah, how did Hopkington do?
Yeah, I wonder what they did.
Well, they're a city, so they probably just went on their city data.
And also, a lot of schools have other health, um, reporting systems where you can access the MIIS information, and Aspen doesn't allow you to do that. So for us to get any information from there, we have to go into each, you have to search each individual student, which is very labor intensive.
That said, we'll do what we need to do to make sure that we have the accurate information now. It just stands to, it, it's a hard, it's a hard, it's a hard piece to think that we have eighty percent of our kids, students at the high school vaccinated when our adults...
We're probably not there yet, but...
Yeah, but we will be, we hope, right?
We get there, just need to know how to get that.
Yeah, eventually, right? I, because I have a feeling that it would balance out, like, the numbers that did go to Rhode Island would balance out with kids that are either in college or at a different school.
Right, 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 right. Yeah, I don't, I don't foresee that we would, our actual school would be higher. I, I truly don't, yeah.
And in talking with people in other districts, they're finding their numbers lower than what the state is reporting. I haven't heard of anyone finding that they have more kids than, than what the state has said are vaccinated.
Okay. Anything else for Karen? Thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you for your efforts.
Plugging.
Uh, Sarah? Capital planning update. We met yesterday, last night. It was a, that was a lot of information, a lot of good information. So, so far, we've assessed future program needs, like educational programs, identifying building and capital needs, and then thinking through possible grade configurations. Another update was that we've commissioned a demographer to look at our population enrollment trends, because that's going to make a big difference in determining where we go from here. And we're going to be getting that information next, probably next week, right? That'll be good to go through. Last night, we actually started fitting the different, uh, grade configurations into what we have, so into our current buildings. We stripped away, like, what condition the buildings are in, that was separate, and looked at, like, our numbers as they are now, at the different grade levels, and how they could fit into our existing structure. That would, and we, what, looking at my notes, how they could possibly fit into existing buildings to best meet the needs of the various grade level students. We also clarified that the maintenance and general repair work is not actually a part, not going to be a part of this subcommittee. We're looking at and focusing on larger configuration and building needs. That, that work isn't taking place, but the focus right now is on this larger capital plan project. Anything else?
Can you keep it all to basics?
The, um, talk about, a little bit about the future, like, that committee's plan to get this information out to the towns and the public.
Yes, okay, so we have another meeting on, on October twenty-seventh, five-thirty, Hartnett Middle School here. Um, November tenth, we're going to have, what are we calling it? An open forum?
No, well, the November tenth, your town's your...
Informational session or...
Like, an info session to share our progress so far, um, and just give an update on our work. And that's at...
Six-thirty.
Six-thirty, thank you. I'll be here. But, yeah, it was a good meeting. And good attendance.
Yeah. Yeah, we have some new people.
Mm-hmm.
The, so the, the committee itself is meeting on that November tenth from five-thirty to six-thirty, and then at six-thirty, we've invited town officials, administration, and, uh, areas, school committee and board members, town board members, to, um, engage in just the presentation of their, their stand right now.
And then, from that meeting, we are inviting the public, correct, to a public forum?
Yes.
Yes, that is the intent, the, the intention is to invite the public to a public forum at the following school committee.
Yep. November eighteenth.
November eighteenth.
That would be when we actually have, sorry, an idea of what we want to do to present our, our plan.
Well, hopefully it'll be presented to the joint info session, and then people will have a chance to review it, to come to a public forum to give us some feedback.
Yep, good.
But hopefully that won't be the first time people see something.
Yep.
And to, to be clear, this process is not to approve anything.
Nope.
It's just to understand what we're considering submitting for consideration.
Correct.
Understand the need.
Very, yeah.
Just to understand the need, exactly.
And it sounds great and ridiculous, but it's actually, that's accurate.
Yeah.
Have, have we gotten the PowerPoint presentation so that we can distribute it?
Uh, I...
They aren't at that point yet.
No, not yet.
No.
We haven't, but I will check in with Greg. They were revising the PowerPoint presentation because there were some of the numbers that we had asked to...
Well, and, and that...
I don't think we should share that, though.
That will be, no, that will be significantly narrowed down after the October twenty-eighth?
Seven.
Seventh?
I believe Tim was asking about the people that were at the meeting. I believe he meant from the committee numbers.
Oh, 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 no, it's going to be fixed.
Yeah, it needs to be fixed, and then it'll be shared with the subcommittee.
Certain grades are missing. And fix it, and then he's going to add that other breakdown.
Correct, there was one grade, there was a grade configuration that wasn't test fit, so they're going to add that and then share it with the subcommittee.
Great, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Um, the MASC, MASs, um, joint conference that usually happens in November, you should have all, are you all getting MASC mail?
Yes.
Your homes, and you are not.
I'm getting spammed with a yes.
You have never, Carrie?
Nope, I get a daily email from them.
Oh, I don't get emails.
If you're getting that, I'm surprised you're not getting the other stuff.
I'm surprised you're not getting, um, you might want to have Catherine double-check that you're actually registered as a...
I'll make another one now.
Member, and are you getting, Amanda? Okay, so does anybody have interest in going to the conference? If so, you should send a note to Catherine. Um, and I believe you have an option of going in person or virtually. So I do believe there are virtual sessions. People are interested. But I wanted to, it's cheaper if you do it sooner, so if you are, I know, and Tammy's not usually here, but she usually tries to go, which was what reminded me to put it on the agenda to see, but Tammy, if you're watching, let us know if you want to go. But Tammy, if you're watching, let us know if you want to go. Okay, and that is all that's on our section, so we'll turn it over to Dr. DeFalco.
Great, thanks. Good evening, everybody. An hour and fifteen minutes in. Usually, I'm saying that a lot sooner.
Matt, go first.
It is great. It's nice to see everyone this evening, and we have a few items on my report tonight, and we are going to start by talking a little bit about our spring twenty-one MCAS data. And before we do a walkthrough of our performance, I want to talk a little bit about the purpose of the test last year, just to kind of recalibrate all of our thinking. I know the results have been public for a few weeks, so it won't be new to probably many people. But I do want to make sure to re-anchor the purpose in our conversation, because last year, the assessment, as the commissioner framed, when he put it out to schools across the Commonwealth, was really for instructional purposes only. And so, basically, what that's referring to is making sure that, like we would do any year, that teachers and principals are able to use that information to help inform and kind of plan where they're going to go next with our teaching and learning. But there were some differences in last year's tests, just to remind everyone about that. But before we go into that, I, I would like to share that our students, we had a really strong participation, which I think is a testament to our parents and our students that really understand the seriousness of this, because even remote families took it, and most came in. So, I just, you know, I want to really give the kudos for that. We had over ninety-five percent participation, which is really great. So that means, you know, if our students enrolled, over ninety-five percent that needed to take it, took it. In most cases, we were up as high as ninety-nine percent. So, a big shout-out to our families and our students for that. You know, I know that this can be a hot-button issue on a good year, never mind in the middle of a pandemic, but I think everybody stepped up and, and really, and showed up to do what they needed to do, so I really appreciate that. So with that being said, we took time, if you recall, the school committee approved, which we're really grateful for, an additional day to work with our staff before the students arrived this year. And at the time, the data we had was just preliminary. It was embargoed, we really couldn't talk about it or do much outside of that four walls of the classroom, so to speak, with that information. But we, we used it to help us do really two things. One, square what we thought we knew, based on the end of last year's STAR data, and all of our assessments and general classroom testing, and student work projects, and all the end-of-year work. Because if you recall, we took all that work and we did a lot of planning over the summer with it, and specifically around which students, at least at the time, seemed would need additional supports around math, English, science. We use that, if you recall, for planning with additional interventionists, but also for additional social-emotional learning and behavioral supports, because we have a lot of data and information on that, too. So we were able to fold a lot of that work into this as well. And then, with the preliminary data and that extra planning day, we were able to really square our thinking with, okay, here's what we thought, this is what we planned for. Now, what is this telling us? Do we, do we have the right students in these groups? Are we starting off on the right track? And I will say that once the data became public and we actually had all of the information back, our principals, coaches, teachers went through that process again. The reason I'm mentioning that is because when we received the results, you know, nobody was thrilled with the outcomes, of course, which we'll talk about in a few minutes, in most cases, although we did have some highlights, for sure. But we were already, you know, a month into our work. So, our mantra, as you know, throughout all of this, has been, we're not going to panic, we're just going to be prepared. We've stuck to that, and when we got the results in September, the final results, where we actually were able to look at questions and standards, a much deeper level than we could do, even in the late-August days of our planning, we really were able to just crosswalk and make sure that what we had was working. So, again, from that perspective, our principals, coaches, our teachers, teacher support staff, everybody has worked really hard to try to get this right. And so, as we walk through the data this evening, I do not want people to feel discouraged. In some cases, it might be hard, but there are some good headlines that I think we need to be focusing on as we, as we talk about our data. And just the last piece I wanted to reference is, to anybody who's watching at home and thinking about some terms or some words that we hear a lot lately, like acceleration or RTI, response to intervention, that really is a direct result of the data we're going to look at and the gaps that were created from our, you know, teaching and learning models last year, which we had to do as a result of the pandemic. And again, we were a school system, we were six from the top with the most in-person instruction. So, keep that in mind.
Yep.
That if we didn't have that, I cannot fathom where the results would be with that. So I just wanted to do a little bit of framing as we take a few minutes and walk through our data. And I'm not going to delve too deeply into this, but it's always important to look at the who. These are our demographics, our most recent demographics, and you can see to the left, our selected student populations, economically disadvantaged, high-needs, ELL students. It's important to remember that your economically, that our economically disadvantaged percent is not the same as the free and reduced lunch numbers. The economically disadvantaged percent are those families that are at that free and reduced lunch level that are enrolled for some level of support or service. So, you've heard recently, we've shared that our free-reduced lunch numbers are over fifty percent as a district. You're noticing that our economically disadvantaged numbers are much lower. These are the percentage of families that are enrolled in some level of support from the state, if that makes sense.
What's the difference between first language, not English, and an English-language learner? Wouldn't somebody whose first language not be English be an English-language learner, or not necessarily? They might have already, already understood, got out of that?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a, there is this acronym called FLEP, formally, language, yeah. It's a formal ELL student.
So that's the, the first one's the FLEP, or whatever?
The first one are our students that, yes, that includes your FLEP students. I know, it's a terrible acronym, but yes.
Okay.
Right. So that gives you the whole umbrella. And then, of course, the table to the right is our, our racial and ethnic diversity numbers. The bottom are just some important data points to share. Four-year graduation rate is at ninety-six point eight percent. Our dropout rate is point seven. Our daily attendance rate, again, was, is over ninety-five percent. However, when you look at the ten, you're probably going to, I'm sure you're processing this.
Right there.
Yeah, the, the missing ten days are missing ten percent. So the daily attendance rate is just what it means. It means the number of kids that are showing up every day. But when you're looking at the missed ten percent, those students are also the ones that are missing the daily. So you can see that we have a chronic absentee issue with a very small percentage of our population that are not coming on a daily basis. Does that make sense? Those numbers are a little squirrely when you look at it.
And that is with, how those compare to other districts, are, are chronic absenteeism, like?
So there's not a state, like, you'll see when we look at the performance data, there's state averages on everything, there's not a state average on that. But what we are able to do is drill down into those numbers. We actually know who those students are. And our principals, our social worker, and our school clinical teams, like our guidance counselors, adjustment counselors, we knew these students, frankly, last year, and we're already doing work with those students. So we can drill into it, we can look at it, student by student, we look at subgroups, to really start doing some targeted work, which, which frankly, we've already started.
But this is with excused or without excuse? The state does not recognize excuse, but we do, correct?
These are, these are unexcused absences.
But that doesn't even include excuse?
These are unexcused absences, yeah. And this is, you know, a number that we've been talking about for a couple of years. That being said.
But it's, but, you know, the people missing, I mean, that's five percent of your school, that's, that's significant.
That is a lot. The daily attendance rate is, again, you know, we, and I, I really dislike drawing parallels to other places or to large aggregate numbers, because frankly, I don't usually care. I care about the four walls of our community. But I do think in this circumstance, it's important, only because through last year, I'm sure you read a lot of the same headlines and heard a lot of the same news stories that I did, students and families just weren't missing. We had a very tight ring on where our students were, and did a lot of follow-up and follow-through. So I just want to put that out there, because again, our, our clinical and student support teams see these numbers, and they're wicked discouraged. But I don't want them to be, because they've done a ton of follow-up and follow-through with our families. But I did want to make sure that we just highlighted that before we do kind of a walkthrough of our data. So normally, as you know, we don't even frankly look at this data. I don't, I never, in the, at least the past few years, have I put up state-district comparison information, because it's just not important. I like to look at how we do compared to us, not how we do compared to others, because I can't, and our staff can, and none of us can control what other people do, right? So, but I do think it's important this year, only because of the year we've just had. And I did not break it down into a significant number of tables like we're going to look at in a moment, when we're looking at how we did against ourselves. But the color coding does give you, in the bar graphs, do you, just a really quick kind of glance at how we did compared to the state. And so, to the left, you can see, on the first bar graph, is English Language Arts, grades three through eight combined. Those are all students, so there's all the subgroups, and everybody's in that. See, our aggregates, everyone. The left bars are the school district, and the right is the state. What I appreciate about the visual is that it does give you a quick, kind of side-by-side comparison of how we did. And, and all of this data, by the way, is public, it's on our school district profile page. And if there is anyone tuning in that wants to delve deeper into this, I'm like a wicked data guy, so I'm happy to share any additional information, any follow-up that anybody would be interested in looking at. But this does give a, a very quick, kind of at-a-glance look to see how we did. As an aggregate, grades three through eight in English Language Arts, mathematics, and science, and science, remember, it's just grades five and eight. Here. Our data, we will break down in subsequent slides, but this just gives you a quick side-by-side. So, this is where we get into our district data, and on slides four through nine is where we are looking at, this is slide four, where we're looking at our two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one achievement and growth data. So, before we walk through this, just some quick headlines. And note that, even though we're looking here at two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-one data, the tests were still different in that the two thousand nineteen MCAS had three sessions of English and math. The two thousand twenty-one had two sessions. So just important to note that the students had less problems, so on one hand, you might think, well, we should have done better. On the other hand, it makes each one of those questions more high-stakes, because they have less of a sample to pull from. So I just wanted to make sure to highlight that, because that's an important piece. But with that being said, there are some good news stories here to share. One of the first pieces you'll probably notice is that in our grade-three English Language Arts, we saw an increase of students that are meeting or exceeding grade-level expectations. And that's a significant increase. So, we're really pleased to see, and remember, grade-three was here every day. So that's just an important piece to put out there, and they also had our first year with our new reading program. Now, programs don't teach, we know that, teachers teach, but I will tell you that the, the teachers are using the materials, and they're going through all the training and the coaching and the support around that. So we saw a really nice increase there. You also will notice that in grade-four English Language Arts, we saw a nice, a very nice increase in the percentage of students meeting or exceeding expectations. So something to keep in mind, our current, so that these students, these fourth graders, were, are now our fifth graders, right, and they were third graders when the pandemic started. So that, so that, that tail end of their third-grade year, they were full remote. And I just share that, because that's some pretty significant growth to share, or to see in, in a year like we had last year. There is no growth for fourth grade. There usually is, but you won't have any growth, because those students did not take the third-grade test. Right? That was the two thousand twenty data. So as far as some, and we'll walk, we'll continue to walk through in a moment, but as far as some general headlines, we saw some nice increases, as I mentioned, in grade-three and four English Language Arts. We actually saw a nice increase in grade-ten in the percentage of students exceeding expectations. English Language Arts in grades five, seven, and eight were basically flat, and you'll see, you're up or down a few points in either one of the performance categories. Grade-six was an anomaly. Grade-six saw a significant decrease in students at grade-level expectations. Those are the current seventh graders, and we'll talk about that in a moment. Mathematics across the board were struggling. Now, I think an interesting piece, and you might recall, we talked about this last spring when we looked at our STAR data, we noticed at the time that our ELA scores were much stronger than our math scores, and we had a conversation around the notion that, like, it, it, it sort of made sense, because reading is something kids will tend to do more on their own than sit at home and do math practice, right? Kids are more likely to pick up a book, a magazine, a newspaper, you know, something, as opposed to sit and practice math problems. So on one hand, it almost made more sense that we saw more growth in ELA than we would see in math. Then on slide five, this breaks down fifth grade. Again, you can see no significant changes in fifth grade in ELA in math. We did see, we did unfortunately see the gains that we were making in science take a step back. And where I think our teachers did a really, really good job of trying to do virtual labs, it's really not the same as it is having a beaker and all the equipment and materials you need in your hands. But you can see that we did take a step back in, in science. Middle school data, as I mentioned, sixth grade really struggled from a performance standpoint. This is very, and I will say kind of twofold, this is very rare for sixth-grade period. We've never seen data like this in grade-six, at least since I've been here. I can only speak to my four years. But we also haven't, we didn't see data like this across the district. So there was an anomaly here, and the middle school principal, coach, and myself, we've actually had conversations with the sixth-grade team. I've only spoken to a couple of the teachers. But I know that sixth grade was a really difficult transition year. In general, the students are moving to middle school, and I think there was some concern around wanting to make sure they spent a significant amount of time reteaching the fifth-grade material that the students did not get, because they were fully remote from March, April, May, and June in fifth grade. And so, you know, when we talk about, we can't live in the place of remediation, we have to be thinking about acceleration, that's a great example of why. This is a great example of, we need to start the school year, which all of our grade levels have done, write on grade-level material, do some of those just-in-time interventions and that reteaching for students that we need, and have really strong response to intervention groups, which we're doing with our interventionists and our classroom teachers. So I just, you know, I know when you see the data, it's somewhat startling to look at, because it is. But there is a why behind that, that we're aware of, and that is being addressed. What's interesting, hot off the press, is the, the STAR beginning-of-year data we just got, I just got today. Seventh grade is struggling still, even in comparison, but it does not look anything like this, which is really good news. So those interventions that we've been doing the past five, six weeks, they're seeming to be taking some hold anyhow. And we have a long way to go, but. Our grade-eight data, these are our current freshmen, and again, you can see basically flat. What I think is really fascinating about the, the grade levels that are flat, their data's flat with a year of pandemic instruction. And so what I, you know, I, what I keep saying to the principals and coaches, and to the teachers, when I can, when I can meet with them, is, you know, And so what I, you know, I, what I keep saying to the principals and coaches and to the teachers when I can, when I can meet with them is, you know, feel confident. We got this data, which is not great, but during a year and almost half of living through a pandemic and having fully remote, hybrid, reshifting the model in the spring, bringing the kids back, but keeping remote kids. We, we did this in an environment that was, was, uh, was very challenging. So I hope that kind of makes sense in terms of like looking where we'll be. Similarly, like I, we did with grades three through eight, this is just grade 10, ELA and math. And again, this gives you a very quick side by side in how we did to the state. If anyone wants to delve into the numbers, again, I'm happy to share any of those specifics. But just so we don't have, you know, 15, you know, 100 slides and data tables, we did a quick snapshot.
Appreciate it.
But again, slide nine, you can see the side by side for grade 10 in 2019 and in 2021. 2019, I want to remind everybody, that's when the state changed the exam to the MCAS 2.0. Remember when we calibrated the 2019 results under the old MCAS, the legacy, we were at 99% proficient and advanced. Under the new regs, you can see that changed very quickly to 56% meeting and exceeding, which is okay, right? We're fine with moving the goalposts. But I think a, a good news story here is we did have almost 10% more students in that exceeding category. So the overall meeting and exceeding number didn't shift significantly, but we were able to move that, those top tier students into that next bracket as far as performance goes. And again, math, our meeting exceeding numbers were flat, but the not meeting did increase. So we've got a lot of work to do in math and I know the committee is aware of all the work we're doing, particularly around curriculum. Special education, again, side by side, this is the district to the state. I did break the numbers down on the next slide, which I'll skip too, because it's just easier to look at.
Yeah, but so there's nobody, and I know it comes up in the next slide because I checked it myself. But it's just so everybody's clear, there's nobody in these categories exceeding.
Correct.
And there it is.
There it is. So if you look at our 2019 to 2021, grades, uh, 2021, excuse me, grades three through eight, these are students of special needs only, students of special needs only. You can see the, when you pull the collective grades three through eight together, you'll see the first column is 2019, the second is 2021. And then we did include the state averages to give everybody a general sense of what that breakdown is. So you can see, when I look at this data, to me, my, we have a crisis happening across our state as far as I'm concerned with students with special needs. And, and not that we can manage that, we can only control what happens here and we have a lot of work to do here.
We have a crisis here too.
We do. We have a lot of work to do here. And I know from multiple conversations with Ms. PG, with the principals, with the coaches, two big focus areas for students that we're trying to really raise that floor with our students of special needs and our economically disadvantaged. Both of those subgroups struggled significantly. They struggle on a given year. You can see clearly how much the pandemic has impacted their learning. We don't have the economically disadvantaged performance here, but if you were to see that, you would see those students are struggling almost to the levels where our students of special needs. And what is the headline, at least I keep hearing and reading about, and I'm sure all of you are seeing the same things, is that the pandemic has impacted those, particularly families living in poverty, more so than anybody else. Well, we're seeing a direct result in our achievement and our growth here as well. The good news, we know that. The good news, we've been planning for it and we've been off and running since the first day of school.
Actually before, because you did your acceleration, summer work.
And then this is our science, I'm sorry, grade, uh, grade 10, my apologies, science. Students with special needs, same thing. So you can see grade 10, ELA, math in the side by side there. The only thing to keep in mind with these numbers, these are very small numbers of students. Yeah.
Not small people, small numbers.
Right.
I said small people, you didn't.
And so really the, the, so what now, what is probably the best segue into our, into my goals for this year are district goals. Because as you know, we've done a lot of work preparing for this. We've done a lot of summer work with over four, uh, over 500 students in summer programming, additional instructional coaches in our buildings, teams of interventionists at every building level, additional STEM courses and increase in science and an increase in after school programming for students. And so before I jump into this, I just want to take a moment and I would like to thank Erin and Tim, who spent a significant amount of time meeting with me and discussing, and you know, discussing the goals, but I would also pose discussing more than that because our goals are really, should be a reflection of our data and a reflection of where we need to go. And so as they are on the superintendent evaluation subcommittee, we were able to spend quite a bit of time together talking a little bit about where we need to go and where our focus area should be. So a big thank you to both of them for their hard work and removing my clip art on my slides.
Kudos.
You'll notice it's almost gone. So as always, our district improvement strategy, until we continue to develop that next iteration of our blueprint, which we're working on, remains the anchor of the work that we are doing. In our goals this year, we will see that there is a, I hope, an evident focus on two areas, which is community and equity. And I want to explain the why behind that. The focus has always been, and it's part of our improvement strategy, bringing the communities together around the schools and really being a district of, of one. I don't think I'm saying anything that others probably aren't thinking because we've already all said this, but you know, we went into this situation together. We've got to come out of it together. And so we need community more now than ever. And so again, those that are tuning in, you know, I'm incredibly grateful for the work and support that we've done to date. But it really is time to roll up our sleeves, to increase that level of support, communication, civility, and let's keep pushing forward. Because the other thread to this is equity, meaning we need to give everybody what they need. And what they need looks and sounds and feels different from one student to the next, one teacher to the next, one family to the next. So while we're talking about this acceleration of academics and social emotional learning, that is a hugely important part of this work. We can't do it without the threat of community and equity. And so I hope that the school committee and those that are tuning in at home see that we're trying very hard to pull both of those levers in order to, to do what we need to do to move our district forward and get out of the situation we're in that was caused from the pandemic. So with that, we, as we have in the past couple of years, are trying to get really focused on just a few things and become good at those few things. And so underneath the superintendent evaluation standards, once we determined as a subcommittee where the focus area should be of actual work, we then talked about, okay, well, with all of that being said, where should these indicators be? And which one should, which one should we be focusing on? And so as we go through this school year, the school committee will see the work and the evidence of the work being done anchored back underneath instructional leadership to these two indicators, management and operation under those two indicators, et cetera. So again, you know, that, that's a lot of conversation and a lot of work and a lot of pushing from Erin and Tim to really think about where should our focus be as we continue to, to move our system forward. So these are the eight indicators that we picked. So now into the, kind of the meaty part of it. Our first professional, or my professional practice goal, which is part of our, the development of our next strategic plan. And so I don't want to read the goals to you, but on slide five, you will see the focus is to create at the end of the school year, through a significant stakeholder involvement, a new district strategy. And we say new, but my sense is at least after the first few weeks of delving into this work in one of our workshops, it'll be a, probably a much deeper and more focused version of our current blueprint. But there's still a lot of work to be done in that area. I think one of the highlights here is that this really needs to be driven by our students, families, staff, leadership, governance and community. And I want to make sure that the community knows, this is not something that I sit and write and give to the school committee. This is something that actually is very much grassroots and from the ground up. That's how we did the first one and that's how we plan on, and how we've already started doing our next version. The second goal is our district improvement goal and the focus here is on academic acceleration. And I do just want to kind of touch on a few important pieces here because while this is a curriculum and instruction goal, curriculum being specifically around mathematics and in the instruction being really around strengthening our classroom teaching and learning and strengthening the, the response to intervention model. I think it's critically important to mention that the work that is running parallel to this is also around our social, emotional and behavioral supports. I can say to you that Jill, Matt and I have already had our first focus groups with students in every building. MES, the complex, the middle school and the high school. And it was fascinating to hear, and we did this last week. They all use different language, of course, right? Our students at MES, our, our youngest learners, you know, talked about, you know, people are mean or people are nice, right? They kind of use very basic language. Someone may have mentioned a unicorn, actually, to get her back on track. But you know, listening to our five and six year olds, they were really, you know, they were really honest about what they like about school, what's working so far, what's not. One of the things we heard from our youngest learners is that they love the opportunity to learn about each other. And when we asked them, why do they, they all said, we love our teacher, we love our teacher. We asked, why? Why do you love your teacher? Because they, all of them said in different ways, but because they give us a chance to learn about one another. And we get to share about ourselves, which I thought was really powerful, right? When you think about what do little, right, your, your little learners want to be able to do. They want to learn about themselves. They want to learn about each other, right? They're five and six years old. So that was really, really important to hear. At the complex, we started to hear a little bit of a different story. So that was really interesting. One theme that ran through the complex, middle and the high school is that the pandemic has really changed the way students feel about each other. They said it different, but we heard comments at the complex like, you know, we don't really understand when we all left, things seemed to be fine. When we returned, the kids seemed to not like me anymore. Or the kids seemed to be really angry towards me or it was really fascinating. The middle and high school students were much more clear. You know, they're like, well, they, you know, we've been behind a keyboard for a year. And now that we're out from behind that, we have to face each other again. And we said some things we probably shouldn't have said, right? And we think about all the things that we've been through as a, as a team, governance, leadership team. And I think we would probably say, we've experienced some of that too, right? And so there's some resetting that needs to be done. And Sarah, you pushed this issue a lot at the last meeting. I'm glad you did because we need to focus very much on that. And I know it was really important to Erin and Tim when we took the feedback from the workshop to think about, you know, how do we embed that work in what, in what we're doing? Because we really are and, and it's so important. It's one thing to have students achieving and growing, but it's another thing, if you look at our purpose.
Yeah, they'll be happy, healthy.
We want really happy, healthy kids as students at the end of the day. So. That data, when you hear about data cycles and you look at that last bullet point, that includes data like what I just shared. It's not just the, you know, the, the black and white numbers.
Right.
Which leads us to goal seven around equity, around diversity, equity and inclusion. One of the things our, our chair of our school committee did not mention, for those of you who might be interested in going to the MASC mass meeting, there will be a fabulous panel at the end, at the end of the first day, which Jane and I will be on, to talk a little bit about the DEI work. And to be able to share some of our lessons learned, which I know we're really excited to do. But this remains a focus of ours across the school district, as you know. And looking specifically at these six areas, five areas, sorry, I did that the last time, these five focus areas. Strengthening core instruction, creating safe spaces in our schools, selecting curriculum and materials, particularly for instance, around mathematics, right? We're in that process this year. We heard from our students that they want materials. It's like the, the, the windows and mirrors piece, right? They want materials that represent students that look and sound and feel like them, but they also want students who don't. And so that's really important. So when we're looking at selecting a new math program, we want to make sure that we're getting the right materials in the hands of our, of our students. So that will very much be part of that. Honoring diversity of thought, but understanding and recognizing there's a tension between awareness and judgment in this work. And then empowering our students to, and owning and valuing and sharing their personal stories. And again, I just, this goes back to the work we heard from our student reps earlier. You know, we're hosting the first of our, of our, of our kind, you know, solidarity conference at our high school.
Yep.
For Blackstone Valley High Schools, which is, this is the inaugural one and we're hosting it.
Yeah.
So just so impressed and continue to be impressed by our students at the high school, the work they're trying to move there. And it's about empowerment and helping students own their story and there's power in that story. So we're really excited about that and supporting, supporting that work. Our capital planning focus, this is again, should be no surprise. Sarah just gave a great update tonight on the work that's been going on for quite some time in that area. That I know Matt, you've been partnering side by side with Sarah as well and helping get us to kind of where we are with the capital planning committee. There's been a ton of work that's gone into that. And so the idea at the end of this year is that we will have submitted a statement of interest, we, we hope, right? By, I think January sometime, and that will have some of our small capital projects completed and that we will have a long range plan. Because we know that in the midst of small projects, in the midst of submitting a statement of interest for a new facility, whatever that ends up looking like, we still have to have a long range plan that addresses all the other issues that are outlined in the capital review that we had done by DRA. So that's more of like a three pronged goal, if you will, around our facilities. And our last goal is, is focus on student learning. If you think about the presentation or review we just did on data, that was kind of the, the, the why. And this is kind of the how, right? And this is like what we're focusing on and how we're planning on doing it. And the, the concept here, the, the focus here is that we are remaining committed. And I've said this every year and we're trying like heck and I'm not going to stop trying. All means all, that's right. We're committed to moving every single student in our system. Specifically, we're looking to increase at least 10% in our meeting and exceeding numbers in ELA, math and science. And we are looking to get back to the 50th percentile of growth. Just an interesting point in the growth piece, we were just having this conversation recently. You know, usually your state average, your growth average is 50, makes sense, right? That wasn't the case this year. You may have noticed that the growth was much lower, was it? I think in the 30s.
30, 38.
Which is a, which is a major problem from that perspective in terms of statewide performance. And I only mention it because we have to get back to at least the 50th growth percentile. So that was why we set a target that might seem assertive or aggressive, but it's, it's, we must. And then of course, the how of this is to implement our current strategy that we have. And the, the specifics of that strategy will be before the school committee at our next meeting on the 28th, when our principals and leadership teams present their school improvement plans, which are incredible, I have to say. Having already had a preview at the work that our instructional leadership teams, coaches and principals are already doing. All of this will absolutely come to life when you hear and see their plan. Because it's, it is much more tangible and actionable in terms of what does it look like for the student sitting in this classroom? Or the teacher, you know, leading this classroom, you will see all those plans laid out.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do need a, if the committee is interested, I do need an approval for the goals.
I motion that we approve the goals as stated.
Any discussion? Anything anybody wants changed, added, deleted?
What are you looking at me for?
I'm looking all over, all over, all, all, all around the room. No, all right. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And with that approval, I will do a short video, and I will send the video out to families tomorrow, talking through, you know, briefly each one, and they'll be posted on our website as well.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. And then just a quick update, our blueprint 2.0 work is moving right along. We are scheduled with the leadership team to do a workshop on November 2nd, similar to the one that we did with the school committee at the, our last meeting. We also have continued with our partner alignment work, so those individuals that are working in our schools and supporting our teachers and leadership teams, we had our second partner meeting yesterday, which Matt and Jill facilitated, it went incredibly well. I've heard just really positive feedback from all three groups about how it's helping them align their focus with our schools and our, and our teachers. That's important, because that work will be directly shaping and reflected in our next version of our blueprint. And Carrie is looking to return to the school committee to do another workshop at the end of January, so I think it's the 27th meeting, which I know we can talk more about that, but, so I'm sharing all those pieces to know that this work is moving full steam ahead. Once we get through the conversation with the leadership team, we'll be taking the show on the road and starting to have conversations with teachers, families, and our governments, local town governments. And we're starting discussions with teachers, more informal conversations. Matt, Jill, and I, over the next two weeks, we're going to be having a coffee and checking with the staff in every building before the students arrive and getting a feel for what's working, what's not, where they think we should be going next. So more informal, but we're starting that ball rolling in the next two weeks. So I just wanted to give a quick update there.
Any questions on that? Thank you.
All right. And then just the.
Food service.
Yeah, food service.
So there's a motion in front of us to increase the food service substitute from $13.50 to $14 an hour.
If I may, did we not do this two months ago?
We did.
Is it the regular food service?
The regular sub.
Yeah. But I, but, so I had a question about that.
It was the regu, it was our full-time, or.
It was the full-time food service salary scale.
Yeah. Well, first of all, I'll entertain the motion.
Do I need to read it?
Okay, yeah, no, I'll, I'll read it before I say it, but I can, but. So I don't have an issue with this, I'm all for this and then some. I think we do need to be, to start approaching the $15, which is, you know, what is seeming to become the rate that you can get at most places. My concern with this is, is our, if we ask somebody to sub as a teacher, isn't it $85?
Yep, $12 an hour.
What?
$12 an hour.
Well, if it's six hours, it's $14.
Oh, six hours.
But it's like, why would I?
Same question.
I'm going to be in the cafeteria, right? So I don't have an issue with this. As a matter of fact, if the finances can support it, I would be supportive of higher, but I, I think we have to look at the daily teacher rate.
Yeah.
Because I hate to think that if you're in the high school, you're making less money than the cafeteria stuff.
And I'm glad we're mentioning that? Is it okay to jump in on that?
Yes, it is.
Because the, as you know, the food service budget just sustains itself.
Right.
So it's, it's, I wouldn't say no impact, because we know in the past, when they have run and we've, and the red, we've had to transfer money over, so I don't want to say it's no impact, although we, I think we can say confidently, it will be no impact to us at least this year, probably next too, frankly. But the other piece around the, the day-to-day substitutes for our buildings, I would agree we need to increase the rate, that's just a bigger budget conversation. That's the only reason that this is in front of you and the other one's not. So please know it's very important to us as well. And we would concur, I would love to increase the rate.
I just, I. Call it up to be a cafeteria sub, a lot easier. All right, any other discussion? Okay, there was a motion by Sarah, seconded by Erin, for food service to increase the hourly rate for cafeteria substitutes from $13.50 to $14 an hour. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Okay.
That concludes my report.
Okay. School committee members, anyone have anything they want to share? I missed the volleyball, so what did we learn about volleyball? Their tournament starts when?
It was shared with us that the, the volleyball team made the playoffs for the first time in our, our school's history.
Oh, ever?
The program only started in 2012. But I do know that they have a phenomenal record for this year, so I asked when and if there was a schedule yet. She said that she doesn't know the schedule, but that she does know the games start after Halloween. I asked if there would be any home games, and she thinks possibly. And she also mentioned that they have their senior games tomorrow. Volleyball is 5:00 PM.
And field hockey is 3:30.
Field hockey is 3:00.
3:30.
3:30.
Thank you, I will watch, but thank you for, it's very exciting. Anyone? You still need trunker, trunkers, or whatever it's called?
We do need people if they want to decorate a trunk.
Trunks.
Absolutely.
On the 23rd of October.
Yep. We give the candy, you don't need to be candy, just decorate a trunk. What's that?
Bepo, bento?
Mepto.
Oh, mepto. Ikomento.
B M E P T O.
There you go.
We can't figure out how to actually say that as a word.
I like pimento.
Pimento.
I'm like mento, mentos. All right. Our upcoming meetings, as have been mentioned, our next school committee meeting, October 28th, November 2nd, there is a meeting of capital planning, which will be followed by an informational presentation session to town committees, school committee, and any interested people who want to learn what the capital sub, planning subcommittee is proposing to submit. And then on our November 18th, we will start early with a public forum on that presentation. If no one has anything else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Yeah. Who do you hear?
I need the yellow photo, please.